Welcome, everyone. Sorry that we had a closed session that ran a little late. So, let's call the meeting of May 6th, City Council Meeting to order. Pledge of the Legion first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Fruin?
Here.
Councilmember Mohan?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Here.
Mayor Chow?
Here. Do we have any closed session report?
There's no report out from closed session tonight, thank you.
I think there was a question of where is the... We had the report from the April 29th closed session. So, the current practice, I think ever since 2022, is to report out right after the closed session. So, we are keeping that practice for now, yeah. Then, next is the ceremonial items. We have three ceremonial items. However, there is one very important item that wasn't placed on the agenda. This week is the Public Service Recognition Week, where we recognize all the public servants serving at every level of the government, from the federal to the state to the city, to the school district. Everyone who dedicate their life to serve the public, from Sunday to Saturday, is a Public Service Week. Then, I would like to take the time to thank all the city employees, part-time, full-time, and also volunteers and commissioners who dedicate their life or take their volunteer time to serve the city. A lot of times, this is a thankless job. I know our residents sometimes complain a lot, but then, we do really, really appreciate all your effort. I think we are lucky to have so many excellent and dedicated staff who do a lot of work behind the scenes to make Cupertino the wonderful city that we have. So, I encourage everyone to take the time to write to the city employee this week to appreciate any work they have done, any work they will do. Thank you. And the first proclamation, we have three proclamations. The item two is recognition of May as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Do we have a presentation for this?
Mayor, we have no recipient for item number two.
Oh, okay.
We have recipients for items three and four.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so this is a month where we, Cupertino, we have more than 70% of our residents identify as Asian American, and over 55% of our population was born outside of the United States. This represents the global roots and diversity that make Cupertino. This month, we celebrate our diverse and inclusive community. And on May 24th, there will be an AAPI multicultural festival organized by a group of volunteer organizations like Asian American Parent Association, other nonprofit. It will be right outside in the plaza. And this year, we also will have an art show inside the community hall. And I think in every city also, there will be a lot of celebration for this week. Then, I can just go to the next item, right? Yeah. So, the item three is a proclamation to Charities Housing and Silicon Valley at Home in conjunction with to declare May as the Affordable Housing Month. So, we have presentation from these two organizations or comments.
Yes, Mayor, we have Allison Chingalini, Director of Policy with SV at Home. We also have Marv Eng, Director of Housing Development, and Andy Leaf, Senior Project Manager for Charities Housing. They will be receiving the proclamations on behalf of their organizations.
And do you have comment to make? Or...yeah.
I just want to say thank you to the City of Cupertino and City Council for recognizing May as Affordable Housing Month and this great honor. And thank you for your continued support for affordable housing. You know, our development right here in Cupertino, the veranda, is a great example of what partnership and collaboration can be, a powerful example. You know, we go out to the site in 2016 and opened its doors in 2019, which is three years lightning fast for our development project. That was really only made possible by the support of our partners, the City of Cupertino, the County of Santa Clara, Housing Trust Silicon Valley, and the Housing Authority, and particularly the city with prioritizing the project to get their entitlements and building permits. So, it's, you know, great thank you to our partners, the city. And, you know, let's do it again on the next latest partnership charities and City Cupertino partnership Marriott Villas. You know, your continued support of that project really shows the commitment the city has to affordable housing in creating the land parcel and the funding commitment earlier this year. So, extremely excited to work with the city on that development. Extremely important development, hope to break ground soon. So, thank you so much again, but most importantly, thank you to the city and the City Council for your continued support of affordable housing.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Allison Chingalani, the Director of Policy with Silicon Valley at Home. I want to thank you for gracing us with the Affordable Housing Month proclamation in partnership with charities. The Affordable Housing Month is critical to emphasizing the importance of affordable housing to strengthen and sustain our communities. SV at Home is a local nonprofit organization, for those of you not familiar with us, that advocates for policies that advance the production of affordable housing, the preservation of existing affordable housing, and protections for vulnerable tenants from displacement and homelessness in Santa Clara County. I do also want to invite you, during Affordable Housing Month, SV at Home hosts a very full calendar of events hosted by both us and many of our partners across the county. You can find those events on siliconvalleyathome.org. It's a great opportunity to connect. The theme for this year's Affordable Housing Month is Strengthen Housing, and that really speaks to both the asset that affordable housing is, to strengthen and sustain our communities, and also to the strength that we have together when we collectively work to advance affordable housing and protect our communities. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you both for coming to the City Council Meeting. The city has recognized Silicon Valley at Home in the past two years for the Affordable Housing Month. This year, I especially asked the city clerk to reach out to Charities Housing because you have done actual work to build housing in Cupertino. So, I would like to make sure that we recognize and thank you for the effort and looking forward to the Mary Avenue project. Thank you. And thank you for the policy work that Silicon Valley at Home has been doing. Yeah, so let's take a photo. Next proclamation is for the County of Santa Clara Department of Family and Children's Services, recognizing May as the National Foster Care Awareness Month. I think this is also the first time we do this proclamation, but I do want to take the time to thank all the foster parents who are opening up their home to help to welcome foster children. That's very essential service, so we have a presentation.
Yes, Mayor, Quinn Vu, Resource Family Foster Parent Recruiter from the county, is here to receive the proclamation. So, would you like to provide comments?
So, good evening, Mayor, Councilmember, and the community members. On behalf of Department of Family and Children's Services, I want to express our sincere gratitude for this proclamation, recognizing May as the National Foster Care Appreciation Month. And this month is an opportunity to honor our caregiver and to raise awareness about critical need for more committed nurturing and consistent families where children and youth in the foster care can truly try. And in Santa Clara County, we have over 600 children and youth who are currently in our home care. And nearly half of them are still in need of a stable, loving family to care for them. And we are deeply grateful for the support of the leaders like you who help raise awareness and make a lasting difference in the life of those children and youth and family. Thanks again for this honor.
Thank you. And I believe you have an upcoming event, right? To bring awareness.
Yes, we have this coming event on Thursday to appreciate the foster parent. That we invite them to come to join our small lunch in the county.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Since this is the first time we do this proclamation, I do want to read out because there is some information about Cupertino. The month of May is set aside as National Foster Care Month to recognize the collective relationship across community organizations to support youth in foster care organization. In Cupertino, there are 14 foster families. And in Santa Clara County, there are 526 foster families. We thank them for their service to take care of these children. The healthy growth and development of our youth is important because they will determine the future direction of our community. Foster families open their homes and hearts to children whose families are in crisis and thus play a vital role in helping children and families heal, reconnect, and launch children into successful adulthood. The City of Cupertino supports the effort of foster families who dedicate their home, their time, to children both in and leaving foster care. We have postponements of the day. Don't have my list up yet. So, we would like to postpone, just a minute. Let me bring my list up. Okay. So, I'd like to propose that we postpone item 10, Fee Schedule, to a date uncertain. Because there is a 10% increase, we would like to take a look since we have just had the increase last year. We want to review that. And then postpone item 12, the Future Agenda Items List. We postpone also to a date uncertain. And then, item 14, the CIP list to consider to defund, that we would postpone to the next special meeting that likely will be May 15. But we are not certain for that yet. So, for now, it's postponed to the next meeting. So, that's a motion.
More second? I think it was Councilmember Wong seconded.
Yes, and Mayor, I forgot to mention that since Councilmember Wong is participating remotely this evening, I will be requesting a voice vote from all councilmembers.
Yeah, okay.
Councilmember Fruin?
Aye.
Councilmember Mohan?
Aye.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
So, next, we have the oral communications. City Clerk, could you give instruction?
Certainly, Mayor. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the council and not on any agenda for discussion. The total time for oral communications will ordinarily be limited to one hour. Individuals, speakers are limited to three minutes. As necessary, the chair may further limit the time allowed to individual speakers or reschedule remaining comments to the end of the meeting on a first-come, first-heard basis with priority given to students. In most cases, state law will prohibit the council from discussing or making any decisions with respect to a matter not listed on the agenda. A council member may however briefly respond to statements made or questions posed by speakers. A council member may also ask a question for clarification, provide a reference for factual information, request staff to report back concerning a matter, or request that an item be added to a future city council agenda in response to public comment.
And, Mayor, I have...I have five requests to speak from Community Hall. I see...oops, I actually lost visibility of...oh. We have two members of the public requesting to speak virtually. Now, three, so in total, that is 24 minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, so first, we have Susan Hanson, followed by Jennifer Griffin, followed by San Ar. Anyone wishing to provide comments under this item, please have a request to speak submitted in the next nine minutes or request to speak virtually with the raised hand feature. Welcome, Susan.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm here tonight because I'm deeply concerned about the recent decision to place City Manager Pamela Wu on administrative leave. For many of us in this community, this is not just a procedural step. It feels like a political maneuver. It's increasingly hard to ignore the impression that this action is more about targeting Pamela than about addressing any legitimate concerns. Pamela Wu has been a steady principal leader for Cupertino. She's brought professionalism, integrity, and a much-needed sense of direction to our city, especially during a period of significant instability. The California State average tenure for a city manager is five to eight years. As you know, Cupertino has had alarming turnover in city leadership. Over the past four years, we've seen four different city managers, which is troubling. But when you add in the interim city managers, the reality is that Cupertino has effectively had seven different city managers in just four years. This is an unprecedented level of instability. It's not just a personal issue, it affects every part of this city. The constant turnover disrupts our city operations, erodes public trust, and makes long-term planning nearly impossible. More than that, it creates a working environment that leads unnecessary economic instability. After the resignation of the city attorney and ongoing fiscal challenge we face, placing an additional burden on the city's budget with the city manager severance package shows a concerning disregard for the financial health of the city and the stability of Cupertino. This is not the time to add more strain to the city's finances. I know I'm not alone in this concern. The Santa Clara County Civil Grand Jury pointed out the harmful effects of a hostile work environment, which includes undue interference and mistreatment by some city council members. This has already contributed directly to high turnover rates. Nearly half of the planning department and 60% of senior staff have left within a single year. This is unsustainable, and it is unacceptable. Pamela Wu was brought in to provide stability and leadership. She's done that with competence and dedication and with a clear commitment to the community. This issue isn't her performance, it's the political environment here within this very city council. We need to recognize the difference between oversight and interference. Council sets policy and provides oversight. City manager handles day-to-day interactions and operations. When that line is blurred, the entire system breaks down. Unfortunately, that's what we're seeing here. Pamela deserves our support, not to be sidelined or scapegoated. She's led with integrity and has been an anchor during the times of uncertainty. It is time to end this pattern of leadership turnover and instability. We can't afford another revolving door of city managers. Cupertino deserves a stable, ethical leadership. It is time to move forward with clear commitment to both our fiscal health and the long-term well-being of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Next, we have Jennifer Griffin, followed by San Ar, followed by Walton Lee. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Jennifer Griffin, and I wanted to talk for tonight about a housing bill by Senator Weiner, which has made it through the two House of Origin committees and now is going to another. But this is SB 79. I am very, very concerned about this bill because it...several years ago, Senator Weiner has had a bill called SB 50, and it was quite alarming and threatening, and it took two years for people that were scared by it to shut the bill down. I believe that Senator Weiner has come out with SB 79 because he is nearing the end of his time in our legislature. You can have 12 years. But I really am very, very tired of having people, elected politicians from other cities such as San Francisco, dictate what happens in the rest of the state. We're all different cities, we're different counties. And this bill, SB 79, would allow any land within one-half to one-quarter mile from what they call transit, it's essentially a bus line, to be high-density, up to seven stories, by right, no sequo. And I understand that the land will be given control by the state and not by any of the cities around it. My house is within one-quarter mile of Stevens Creek Boulevard, which would be considered a transit corridor. So, that means that any land that's along any bus line in any city or county in this state would be subject to this bill. They have said that this bill is the biggest taking of land in this state that most people have ever heard of. It is outrageous in terms of...and I have seen these bubble diagrams where people have put in how this bill would completely take over the land along El Camino Real, Southern California. I was in San Diego last week on a vacation, and I thought very, very... I thought oftentimes about what this bill would be doing to cities all over the state. We can't let it go any further. It has to stop here. We have to be able to take back our local control. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have San Ar, followed by Walton Lee, followed by Jenny.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and councilmembers. Firstly, I'd like to appreciate our city staff. We have wonderful city staff, wonderful department heads, and wonderful field staff. And I'd like to give a shout-out to all of our wonderful city staff for the work they do, day in and day out, selflessly and with passion. I'd also like to welcome our acting new city manager, Tina Kapoor, and wish her all the best in the role. I'm sure the community supports her and supports all of you all through this change. I would like to support the council through this period of all of the changes that you're going through. I believe you're getting heated commentary from the public on all sides of multiple issues. And I urge all of you to partner and work together with each other and with the agencies. You're all here because of your calling to solve communities' problems, to address the communities' needs, and to give for something other than yourselves. Your calling to get on the dais did not start overnight. It came through a passion to give back to the community. And I urge all of you to reflect on that calling that led you to community service and partner with yourselves and partner with the agencies, because you cannot solve problems by a divided approach to problem-solving. And our community is giving you heated commentary on both sides, and the need of the hour is not heated commentary, but to take a very rational approach across all of our stakeholders and partner and collaborate with the stakeholders. We have important stakeholders. Residents are an important part of that. Developers are an important part of that. Our businesses are an important part of that, and so are our agencies. And so, I urge all of you, in each problem that you will face today and off dais, to partner with all of your stakeholders and solve the problem that needs solving, not just the agenda item in front of you, but to look for ways to be creative, amend your agenda items, and look for solutions that the community seeks. Our student bodies are not mutually exclusive. I hope you will treat all of them equally and find ways to solve problems for all of them. Similarly, when it comes to our staffing, change is inevitable. I said this in previous past commentary as well. The change that you are reflecting is not a change brought upon by any one person on dais or any faction on dais, but it is a reflection of what the voters asked you to do. There was a very clear mandate in the last election for change, and part of that mandate was a disregard for the voice of the residents. We had been consistently ignored over the previous two years on issues. Agenda items had been pushed aside when they did not want to come to the dais. And so, as you look ahead, change is inevitable, and I ask that we all look forward and support our acting city manager and any other changes beyond that. We have very capable staff, and this is an opportunity for growth and to give the bench a chance to show the talent. Thank you.
Thank you, San. Next, we have Walton Lee, followed by Jenny. And then, we'll move to those members of the public requesting to speak virtually. Welcome, Walton.
So, um, sorry. So, thank you, Mayor Chow and Vice Mayor Moore and the rest of the council for this opportunity to speak. My name is Walton Lee, and I'm a high school student at Arc Beach Community High School. And I'm here to speak as the ambassador of the Stanford Asian Liver Center and as the founder of a youth advocacy organization, TMAHPV San Jose, which actually serves more than just San Jose. So, today, I wanted to cover the issue... So today, I wanted to cover the issue of hepatitis B and liver cancer and urge the city of Cupertino to take assistive action against this virus. So, all right. So what is hepatitis B? Hepatitis B is a contagious liver infection caused by the hepatitis B virus known as HPV, and it can vary between a short-term illness and a chronic condition. And it is spread through blood-to-blood contact through razors or needles, unprotected sexual intercourse, or from an infected mother to a child. And HPV is known as a silent killer. There are almost no initial symptoms, and it can remain undetected for up to 10 to 30 years. And once it does turn into something serious, it can lead to liver cirrhosis or liver scarring, liver failure, or liver cancer, all of which are life-threatening. So what can we do about this? Available precautions include the hepatitis B screening test and the hepatitis B vaccine, also referred to as the first anti-cancer vaccine. And it is known as, it is a three-shot vaccine that provides lifelong protection from the virus, hence the Asian Liver Center's message, "Three Shots for Life." And both the test and the vaccine were made widely available to Californians thanks to the 2022 bill by Newsom AB 789. And because it was only recently made available, I believe it is paramount that we now push the message that free vaccines and tests are available to the public via the healthcare system. And in an effort to get the word out, the Stanford Asian Liver Center and 20 high schoolers from Team HPV San Jose have held numerous local outreach events since 2022. And we are continuously leveraging social media to really fortify the message. We've also worked with 10 cities in the Bay Area. For example, recently, Mayor Chow and the rest of the city council proclaimed May 18th through 25th as Hepatitis B Awareness Week, and our team thanks you for that. So in conjunction with our efforts to raise awareness of this disease, I suggest that the city of Cupertino could assist further by displaying information on the city website, detailing the dangers of HPV and methods to prevent and combat it. So hepatitis B is a subtle yet alarming issue, but I believe action can be taken to minimize it here in Cupertino. Thank you.
Thank you, Walton. Next, we have Jenny. Welcome, Jenny.
Hello. Hiya. Hi, hello, council members and guests and audience. And a few items, maybe ones on the agenda map. And I was just listening to somebody talking about the city manager. Some of them not up to date, and I want to say something, somebody mentioning last four years as a former manager, that was not quite true, because she's on the petition for at least two years. I know there's interring before, so it's not like it's lost for two, I guess. And also, personal experience, I'm not talking about the rest, all the residents, anyone else. And she's not responsive at all, and we've been scheduled meetings since day one. It's already two, three years she's on the road, you never respond and have a meeting with us. And also, the legal department inside and outside companies illegally persecution prosecution on us. So we don't think it's good, if you guys have evaluation on her, it was not really very effective manager. That's also, we are not speaking for everybody for basically springs on it. And another thing, I thought about the agenda on this housing conversion. I know for a lot of people, maybe some people outside, international students, maybe thinking, you know, some.
Excuse me? I'm so sorry.
Yeah.
That's an item on the agenda.
Okay.
So commentary needs to happen during that speaking session.
Okay. Okay, I appreciate it. Okay. Yes, I'm back to the one about the matter about the legal departments and our family as directly affected. This also relates to the housing, because we have a legal place in the backyard, and actually, it's for the children play, because we know it's related to the, in general, the people, whoever complain about whoever renting the room, because of a single family, we're renting rooms, and we're afraid of the, because the overreach of the legal system. So we are afraid of renting the room out, even though we are good people. That's bottom line to solving the housing issue, because we're the lowest cost for people living in the city. So I just want to mention that, and that's what people actually use to support solving the housing issues and not using this legal venue to take their property and then buy it away. In general, we're afraid to deal with any people, actually get to rent the place out, rent the room out, not even the place out. So I just want to mention that, and I hope the city basically respond to our request to have a meeting, because we have very small, you know, requirement for the city. For that, and then turn the meeting back together. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we will move to those members of the public who are requesting to speak virtually. Katie Bravo, Lisa Warren, Sashi Begor, Louise Sedadi, Seema Linsgog, and Connie Cunningham. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Katia Bravo, and I serve as the Chair of the Student Rights and Equity Committee within the Deanna Student Associate Student Government. In this role, I act as a bridge between the student body and our college administration, advocating for equity, inclusion, and the well-being of our diverse student population. I'm here tonight to express strong support for the Full Hill Deanna Community College District's proposal to utilize those Measure G funds to acquire existing housing near Deanna College for students.
Katia, excuse me, this item is actually agendized for later in the evening. If you'd like to provide public comments, then it's item number nine on this agenda tonight?
I did notice that, and it's just I won't be able to make it during that time, which is why I want to make sure that I came during the time I was available. Is that okay if I continue?
Actually, legally, you should be providing public comments under that item, but you can certainly email the council separately.
I see. All right. Thank you so much for your time, then.
Thank you. So next, we have Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Hi, thank you. So this was, I'm just going to make a comment about one of the proclamations. They're all a great idea and I appreciate them, but the foster system proclamation and acknowledgement is something that I can say personally. I have two biological siblings, but for over two years, we all had another brother living and learning with us. I was, I am now more grateful than I was then, because I didn't realize what a great experience that was for us as a family. So I'm grateful for my parents for reaching out and choosing on their own to invite another child into our house for a period of time, and the results were great. You went back to a family that was ready for him to be there, and it was nothing of his doing that created his situation, nothing at all. So, and in fact, it was really touching. Years later, he came in his uniform as a serviceman with his fiancee on his arm to my parents' home to thank them and to have them meet her before they got married. Pretty incredible. He was 10, he was between 10 and 12 when he lived with us, and over 10 years later, he made that effort. It was pretty cool. So it's a great system, and I just want to share my perspective on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Next, we have Sashi Begor, followed by Louise Sedadi, followed by Seema Linsgog, followed by Connie Cunningham. Welcome, Sashi.
Hi. My name is Sashi Begor, a resident of the city.
Sashi, I'm sorry to interrupt you. It's a little bit difficult to understand you. If you could possibly speak a little closer to the microphone?
Is this any better?
Yes, perfect.
Sorry?
That's perfect. We can hear you.
Okay, let me just, hold on. I'm having trouble with my, let me just try to switch to my. Ah, yeah. Okay. Is this better?
Yes. Yes. Yes, we can hear you. Sashi, you can go ahead and speak. We can, okay, so Sashi dropped off. If she rejoins, then I will call on her again. So next, we have Louise Sedadi. Welcome, Louise.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Okay. So, dear Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, council members Cruen, Moen, and Wang, there has been no transparency in how we seem to have lost another city manager. Pam Wu's annual performance evaluation was completed in November of 2024. Another close performance evaluation was done in April 2nd of this year, and then again on April 28th, and then again a few days later. That's a significant number of evaluations. And for an employee who has helped Cupertino through crises admirably and has made significant improvements through processes and employees' morale throughout her tenure. She has professionally facilitated the council meetings. There has been too many, too much council in our senior city staff over the past 10 years, including seven city managers in four years, 60% of top leadership leaving between 2018 and 2022, and now another city manager seems to be gone, though she's put on paid leave right now. And, and so this is very non-transparent as to what is going on, and the city manager has made significant accomplishments that this council should appreciate. Cupertino had their housing element approved and certified by H U D. She presided over budget admirably with the most public outreach over a time of severe uncertainty. And finally, there's been some, finally, some progress in Falco. Pamela's work to settle the lawsuit to get the project moving and to eventually gain sales tax income and life on the empty lot is appreciated. We need the council to be focused on forward progress for the city. We, to do that, we need our council members to respect our staff, and respect that with the power to oversee the staff. Comes a responsibility to do it transparently, appropriately, and professionally. And what has been done behind closed doors regarding the city manager is very disturbing. Taking people's personal remarks and pushing professional criteria should have been used instead.
Thank you, Louise. That is your time. And I see Sashi has rejoined the meeting. I will allow your microphone. Welcome, Sashi.
Hopefully, you can hear me this time here in the valley.
Yes, we can.
But sometimes, technology just doesn't work. Anyway, my name is Sashi Begor. I am a resident of Cupertino who, like many values, transparency, accountability, and good governance. First of all, though, I would like to thank the dedicated staff who continue to serve our city through times of transition. You are all essential to keeping Cupertino running. I also want to thank the council for stepping up to address serious issues and for taking action when leadership fails to reflect the community's best interest. And I'd like to extend a warm welcome to acting city manager Tina Kapoor. I wish you success in this role. I'd like to continue by stating, I appreciate the council's decision to place Pamela Wu on administrative leave. I believe this was a necessary step, given the ongoing concerns raised by many residents. It started with limiting public participation to unprofessional conduct during meetings to political bias in interactions with council members. These patterns have eroded trust. During the last election cycle in 2024, the city illegally removed the signs of candidates Ray Wang and then council member running for reelection, Kitty Moore, with no clear explanation. Another example of her political behavior was the dismissal of concerns of Linda Visner residents by putting away the petition of 600, petition containing 600 signatures without any action on it. Additionally, her questionable international travel, twice, once to Taiwan, once to India, and there's so far been no city manager who travels on sister-city issues. So these are not minus missteps, they point to deeper issues. And it's also worth noting that much of the support for Ms. Wu seems to come from organized advocacy groups like C4A, Cupertino for All, and YIMBY, raising fair concerns about whose voices are actually being elevated versus those of longtime Cupertino residents. A lot of us have submitted detailed emails to the council, and I am very happy with the decision that the council has made. And finally, I would like to say that anybody who thinks that, you know, this council is asset people is really showing which side they are on. They're not for the residents, they're just for developers or somebody else. Anyway, thank you again to the staff. Welcome to Ms. Kapoor, and thank you to the council for your service.
Thank you, Sashi. And next, we have Seema Linsgog. Welcome, Seema.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, and council members, I'm on the planning commission, but I'm speaking today as a resident. The actions of the city council over the past few months, including the unjustifiably punitive treatment of our city manager and the minimizing and disregard for the needs of our resident minorities in our city, like trying to stop the Mary Avenue project for disabled residents because we don't want to lose the city parking, or trying to cancel bike lanes because we don't like our cycling minority, have shown a systematic breakdown of our values as a city and a breakdown of the fabric of our community. Seven city managers in four years? Seriously, what are we doing? Accusations that anyone who disagrees with you is bought by the developer? Like, seriously? Come on. We've become a laughingstock in the entire state, and honestly, rightfully so. We're seeing a culture of disregard for others and prioritizing your own personal self-interest over the needs of the residents and the entire community, including our vulnerable minorities. I would really hope we are better than this, that we choose kindness over cruelty, generosity over selfishness, and facts over perceptions. I urge this council to make decisions that benefit all residents in this city, not punish them out of petty grievances that reinforce our shared values as a community, and don't seek to punish those with whom you disagree. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Seema. And I see Cunningham is no longer requesting to speak. So, Mayor, that concludes the speakers requesting for this item.
Okay, thank you. City attorney, could you please comment on whether the city has any way to conduct performance evaluation in public?
Yeah, the Brown Act clearly provides a mechanism for the council to evaluate the city attorney and other, I'm sorry, the city manager or the city attorney or any employee of the city in closed session and privately. In fact, it's required to do so.
So we cannot legally discuss this in public, right?
That's true.
Yeah, thank you. And back in 2018, the council put the city attorney on paid administrative leave without any alarm announcement, and the city manager retired like two months later, no announcement. So I believe I have tried to be transparent. As soon as we have made the decision, I made announcement to the older employees and then to the public. And we cannot talk about any details more than we have revealed. And then another correction, that Mary Avenue project, there was confusion from the public I'd like to correct. I think all the council. I think all the council members supported the funding $2 million for Mary Avenue. The condition was we disagree on whether to add the $1 million additional funding on the condition of parking, explore options for car parking or not. That was the decision. So, and that's it, yeah. Okay. So then, next, we go to the consent agenda. I don't believe anyone pulled any item. And one is postponed. Oh, no, no, not consent, yeah. That's a public hearing. So we have five, six, seven, eight. May I have a motion?
Mayor, would you like public comment for this item?
Oh, yeah. Public comment for the consent.
And I currently see no requests to speak. Let me just grab this one card over here. No request to speak, Mayor.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll second it.
Thank you. And let's vote.
No. Councilmember.
Oh, voice call, yeah.
Councilmember Cruen?
Aye.
Councilmember Mohan?
Yes.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Next, we go to a few public hearing items. The first one is an interim urgency ordinance imposing a moratorium on transition of multifamily housing to student housing within one health mile radius of Foothill Deanza Community College, or approval, a resolution encouraging the building of newly constructed student housing and preventing the converging of multifamily use housing to student housing within the city of Cupertino. Do we have a staff report?
Me too. Excuse me. Good evening. So, the Foothill Deanza Community College District is, this is sort of come, the idea of preventing the conversion of multifamily housing to student housing has been raised in the city by the college district's desire to purchase McClellan Terrace apartment building and transition it to student housing, requiring all of the residents of that apartment building to move out of the building, basically displacing all the tenants. And so this brought up the issue of the student housing issue in the city of Cupertino. Specifically, the Cupertino's general plan emphasizes that new housing sites should avoid or minimize displacement of existing uses, particularly existing residential uses that would necessitate the relocation of residents. That's been a policy of the city for a number of years. In response, the city has developed, and it's here before the council, an interim urgency ordinance. And an interim urgency ordinance is something a city can enter into to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. They can implement an urgent.
City Attorney Andrews, I apologize. Did you want me to share your presentation right now?
Yes, thank you.
I'm very sorry to interrupt.
We have a presentation. It's pretty minimal. Shouldn't take too long.
Okay, so.
So I was just describing that Foothill Deanza Community College is planning to buy and convert McClellan Terrace Apartments to student housing. And so, the city is considering an urgency moratorium. And basically, it's a mechanism under the government code that allows a city to prevent an imminent change in land use that may conflict with a zoning proposal the legislative body intends to study within a reasonable time. And so basically, when an issue comes up, when an application or a desire to change a land use conflicts with a principle that the city has in their general plan or is generally supportive of, the city can pass an urgency ordinance that prevents the change in use while the city studies the issue and makes a determination of how it can change the zoning regulations in the city to support the city's intent, which is to retain its multifamily housing. Yesterday, the college district's board voted, just yesterday, to end due diligence on the purchase of McClellan Terrace Apartments. They decided to proceed with the purchase of the apartments, and they retained relocation services for the displacement of the current residents. So the issue is here. It's an urgent issue for the city because this plan is happening. And the city has policies encouraging the retention of multifamily housing, supported by its general plan. And so, the city is considering this urgency moratorium. And the way the moratorium works is if it passes, and it needs four votes to pass, a supermajority, then for a 45-day period, the city can stop the conversion and study mechanisms for retaining multifamily housing and encouraging the building of new student housing. And it can extend that urgency ordinance for another 10 months and 15 days if it deems that it needs to implement a zoning change. Zoning changes are complicated. They take lots of study, experts, et cetera. It doesn't happen overnight. And so this urgency ordinance allows the city to study that and then adopt appropriate ordinances to protect the city's interests during the urgency ordinance period. And in this instance, we do have an actual emergency because the college district has agreed to purchase the property for $65.5 million. The sale will close in July, and the college district will require the displacement of all residents by June 30th of 2026. They've already hired relocation assistance experts. And the study and creation of the new zoning ordinance will require six to nine months. And that is the urgency ordinance that's before the city council tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. So, yes, before we go to public comment, I would like to, why we consider the urgency ordinance? We, the college has never, till now, communicated directly to the city, the mayor, or the city staff, till now. We learned about the potential purchase of McClellan Terrace from the residents after they have already made a decision on the 10th of March. And then because of a lot of concerns, I think residents brought up fair housing issue that this is a particular red market, affordable level, at the affordable level that's rare in Cupertino. And we heard the comments on April 2nd. And then, at the end of that meeting during the future agenda item, the council voted unanimously to agendize a study session to look at the impact to Cupertino and see if there is anything we could do to make sure that we can do our due diligence to find out if there is any impact, how we can mitigate them, and if the city can have some control on certain this impact that's coming to affect not only McClellan residents, current residents, but all future residents who need the housing at that affordability level and the neighborhood. But then immediately after the council just said we want to study, Deanza canceled the meeting that request that they made the day before. But for transparency, I emailed all the Deanza board that the city council has agendized the study session, but they refused to communicate without attorney present. And then, since we are not sure what's the timeline, would they take the full 120 days to do the due diligence so that the city can do our due diligence? We are not sure. Therefore, a lot of community members requested an urgency ordinance. Therefore, we are considering that. That's before us today. And then, at the same time, I think we also are looking at a potential resolution the city attorney has drafted, that we would like to emphasize in the resolution that we support creating new housing with the bond major that we pay for on all of our property tax. And then, while we try to look at how we can prevent permanent loss of naturally affordable housing and at this site or any other site. So that's, we don't know how or whether we can do it yet until we study. So we would just hope to be given time to study. That was the intent of this item. So we can have public comment now? Yeah.
Yes, Mayor, I have 34 requests to speak in community hall. That's 102 minutes, allowing three minutes for each speaker. I see four requests, five requests to speak virtually. So, that's 37, about 111 minutes.
100. So, I had been reluctant to shorten the time for an agenda item. I think, what does council member think should we shorten the time to maybe one minute and a half? That's still about one hour of public comment. Yeah? We think that makes sense?
I'd say two minutes.
I'd say at least two minutes.
Two minutes? Okay.
It's good to have the public comment, but if you have similar comments, it'd be important to consolidate or be shorter.
So we will shorten the time to two minutes. And you are encouraged if you are in a group that you all have similar concern. You can come to the podium all together so that then it shows more impact. But maybe that will shorten our time too. Thank you.
Okay, so two minutes. Very good. Thank you, Mayor. We have, our first speaker is Don Peterson, followed by Ricky, followed by Ricardo Alvarez. Welcome, Don.
Good evening, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, council members. I'm Don Peterson, and I'm with Prometheus Real Estate Group. And as you know, we're the owner of McClellan Terrace Apartments and the seller in the pending sale transaction. And we obviously would be greatly impacted by this proposed urgency ordinance being considered here this evening. Suffice to say, we are strongly opposed to this measure. We do believe that the proposed ordinance dismisses the interest of over 300 housing insecure students and rejects the will of the voters in Cupertino who voted for Measure G in 2020. And additionally, there are legal considerations that should be weighed as referenced in our letter submitted to the city in advance of this meeting. But what I further want to highlight here tonight is some background on our company. Prometheus is a longtime housing provider and owner-operator of rental housing. We're a family-owned company headquartered locally in San Mateo. We're a certified B corporation and have a well-documented track record of giving back. Our history dates back more than 50 years. And in Cupertino specifically, we've been operating and developing multifamily properties for over 40 of those 50 years. We currently own and operate seven multifamily properties in Cupertino. And those seven properties translate to 1,795 apartment homes, which are being managed by us currently. These numbers make us the largest private owner-operator of apartments in the city. And our intention is to continue our work with the city and add to its housing stock, whether it be through the pursuit of new development opportunities or by building additional units at one of our existing properties, as we did at Built More several years back. Also, with regards to our nearly 1,800 apartment homes, we are working cooperatively with the college district on a tenant relocation plan, and we will be encouraging and incentivizing our McClellan Terrace residents to consider relocation options at one of our other Cupertino properties. Bottom line, we urge the city council to vote no this evening. We don't believe there is a displacement emergency. This is about utilizing existing housing for a critical, underserved, community need. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Next.
No clapping, please. This is a common practice in almost all the public meetings because you don't want to discriminate people based on their opinion. You are welcome to do any silent sign to support the opinion you support. Thank you.
Next, we have Ricky, followed by Ricardo Alvarez, followed by Parker Graves. Welcome, Ricky.
Hello, council. Hello, council members, mayor, vice mayor. I believe there might have been a mistake. I am also Ricardo Alvarez, so you can scratch that out. Anyways, I'm a Deanza College student, supporting acquiring and converting the McLennan Apartment Complex into student housing. I have attended other meetings and heard the concerns of the community and the tenants. However, I have yet to hear any concerns for the students, one of our community's most vulnerable groups comprised of foster youths, students with disability, veterans, and active military members. In a survey conducted by the Deanza College Office Institutional Research and Planning in Spring 2024, 51% of respondents stated that they experienced food insecurity. 47% expressed they experienced housing insecurity, and 18% indicated homelessness. And 49% noted that mental health issues impeded their success at Deanza all in the past 12 months. The conversion of McLennan Apartments is more than just providing students with housing. It's also about providing our students with accessibility to the services and programs Deanza offers, including resource for basic needs, the food pantry, student health services, the mental health and wellness center, and other vital resources. Without housing or access to these essential services and resources, how can we expect students to have the capacity to stay enrolled and successfully attain their educational goals? Yet, I am sympathetic to the families being evicted because regardless of whether Deanza successfully acquires the property, Prometheus, the current property manager, will sell the property, imposing a precarious situation upon the families of McLennan. Nevertheless, whatever decision you make, I implore you not to turn your back on either community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ricardo. Next, we have Parker Graves, followed by Michelle LeBlue Burns, followed by Nick Hunchmore. Welcome, Parker.
Hello. My name is Parker Graves. Good evening. I'm a student at Foothill and Deanza College. And on behalf of my peers, I'm here to tell you that the need for affordable and nearby student housing is one that urgently needs to be addressed. The high cost of living in Cupertino and surrounding areas impedes the ability of many students to succeed academically. Students who live independently of their families are forced to work full-time, sometimes multiple jobs, just to scrape by. On top of that, students are burdened by long commute times as well. I wanted to give a personal example of a classmate of mine. We were assigned to do a group project together, and I found that often, they were absent, retarded to class. And from a place of frustration, I reached out to them, saying, you know, like, what's getting in the way of you participating? And they told me that was because they were having to work overtime, and their commute, all the way from Hollister, if you can believe that, took them two hours to get to school, to and from school, and oftentimes, just to make it to class, they would sleep in the parking lot overnight. And originally upset with them, I came to emphasize and really respect them for the dedication that they put in. But it also opened my eyes to the struggles that my peers go through just to get to school. With that being said, I think this student housing project is a step in the right direction. And I think giving students the option to live close by school affordably, comfortably, would bypass the financial and geographic barriers that prevent many from doing well in school. So, with that all being said, I ask you please to vote no on the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you, Parker. Next, we have. Next, we have Michelle LeBlue Burns, followed by Nikunj Moore, followed by Haldana. Welcome, Michelle.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Michelle LeBlue Burns, and I'm an administrator at Dianza College. I've worked in community colleges for several decades. And I'm here to implore you to please reject this ordinance. I work with students every single day who struggle with basic needs, who are homeless, who are couch surfing, who are food insecure, who deal with mental health issues because they don't know where they're going to lay their heads every night. This is a crisis point we are at. And we really, really need to think about all of these students that we see sitting here that represent our thousands of students at Dianza College, who really struggle with so many needs. And this is a wonderful opportunity to provide them with stable housing so that they can complete their education and they can reach their goals and be able to continue to contribute to our society. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Next, we have Nikunj Moore, followed by Haldana, followed by Pamela Hershey. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. My name is Nikunj Moore. I'm a student at Dianza College currently, and I'm part of the Dianza Student Government as part of the Finance Committee. Firsthand, I've seen how much our students have needed and rely on our resources to be able to perform in school and be able to get a better future through education. And this moratorium would directly impede on their ability to do that. I've yesterday, we talked to the Board of Trustees of Dianza Foothill College. And we did, we expressed our our very dismay with this more this proposal for a moratorium, just due to the ability that or due to the fact that it might impede upon some students' ability to learn and their ability to create and contribute to our community. This moratorium is not only a forty-five day pause, but it could lead onto more than that. And similar things in the past have happened, like example Blockbuster. They didn't, they didn't adapt to streamers such as Netflix. And what happened, they soon went bankrupt. Applying that to this situation, this moratorium could eventually lead to a pause of student housing. And I think that's just a loss for Dianza's community and Cupertino as a whole. So I'd like to urge you guys to vote no on this moratorium and support our students in their ability to learn. Thank you.
Thank you, Nikunj. And next, we have Haldana, followed by Pamela Hershey, followed by Shor Kay. Welcome, Haldana.
Hello, my name is Haldana. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members for your time today. I'm very happy to be here. As I'm sure you all know, success in higher education isn't only dependent on studying for tests and doing homework. Students also need stable housing, transportation, and so much more to truly thrive in their education. Dianza students face unique challenges with our campus being located in an extremely high cost of living area. And community college students in general are often the most vulnerable. Many of us come from low-income backgrounds or are balancing families and jobs on top of our studies. The district's efforts to expand affordable housing will directly support hundreds of students, who might otherwise be forced to forfeit their education. Studies show that there is a demand for around thirteen hundred to fourteen hundred beds for students in the Foothill-Dianza District. At Dianza alone, there is a demand for seven hundred and eighty-six beds for single uni- for single students and two hundred and forty-seven units for students with families. The need for affordable housing is undeniable, which is why I urge you to vote no on the moratorium and to support students through accessible and affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Haldana. Next, we have Shor Kay, Pamela Hershey, followed by Shor Kay. Welcome, Pamela.
Good evening, my name is Pamela Hershey. Good evening to Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, and his council members and city staff. Thank you for all of your time and commitment. I am here for the moratorium because I want to say yes, because there's many reasons. We I know students need housing, college students need housing, but you know, there could be other alternatives. For example, San Jose State has housing development. They took over part South Tower at the Fairmont. They're housing seven hundred students at that tower. They plan on buying that from the Fairmont Congomorre in two years. I did see that on the internet. So why couldn't we look at an alternative plan? Like we have Aloft, for example, is a hotel that's going under. It will house the students, more like a dormitorium, maybe different than the apartment. But they have a lot of facilities, and that's available probably quite sooner than them going through the each apartment and updating the repairs that are needed at the terraces of McClellan Terrace. I know students are being dis- uprooted, the sixty-seven students that are living at the terraces now. Yes, they are being relocated, and I understand that. But even if they do have an apartment in another part of town, and I know they're working really hard on that, that doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to have a space in that school in that grade level. As a teacher for the district, it's not guaranteed that you're going to move over to Biltmore, and there's going to be room available in the third grade classroom at Collins per se. So you have to look at also, it takes a little time to figure out grades of students, what school they would attend. Sure, they can offer those maybe apartments to them, but will that actually help those students go to school? Parents are going to be getting going in their car and driving them to other locations. For example, Collins is impacted, so in our neighborhood, so students are being moved from there to Montclair because there's no room at our school for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Pamela. Next, we have Shor Kay, followed by Chandra Kant Tibrowala, followed by Sanar. Welcome, Shor.
Hello, City Council members. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak here. I first want to echo my peers and community members in our position in support of affordable housing and thus voting no on this moratorium. As I know, every single person here is very well aware of everything that goes into being a student. That includes not only attending classes and taking exams, but that also goes into all the work that you do at home. In addition to that, many of our students, as has been previously pointed out, are going through a lot more, including struggling for access to proper housing. It's nearly impossible for students to juggle their family, work, finding housing, as well as succeeding at school. And we want to allow our peers and our fellow community members the proper opportunity to succeed. To get straight to it, it's been five years since the bond has been passed, and multiple housing options have been looked at, but this is the only feasible one. We have, we don't have the money to purchase an entirely separate lot and build from the ground up. And we spend more and more time waiting and waiting. And with each passing ti- each passing period of time, whether that be a day or a month, we lose purchasing power with the amount of money allocated by the bond. As we've demonstrated already, there's a clear need for student housing right now. That means the more and more that we wait and the further we delay these projects, the less students who are in absolute need of this housing to be able to go through with their studies and succeed are denied. I strongly urge you to vote no on this moratorium in support of students who are a crucial member of this community and of the Bay Area community writ large. Thank you.
Thank you, Shor. Next, we have Chandra Kant Tibrowala, followed by Sanar, followed by Muthun. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I'm just reading out from the email that I sent pretty late in the day. This message is to share my thoughts on the subject for suitable governance and oversight actions on the topic that we are discussing today right now. The basic premise to my mind is there is no doubt that students, FHTA students in this context, should have access to affordable housing and supportive ecosystem while they are engaged in the academic pursuits so that they have a better chance in life for themselves and as contributing citizens and leaders of society at large. There is really no doubt there. The faculty of FHTA may certainly stand to benefit from housing provided at these premises by the institution, that is FHTA, they work, they work at. Thirdly, the current multifamily units at seven nine one eight McClellan Terrace provides affordable housing to families in an ecosystem where affordable housing is already stressed. Furthermore, and I could be wrong, but in my mind, this is what I see it as. The transaction, this particular transaction, this is not a simple, and it is not simply a real estate transaction between a buyer and a seller of the subject property. Role of the city. The city has the resources, to my mind, the authority and the mandate to not only participate in this transaction, but help provide the guidance and governance on probably a suite of solutions that meets not only the needs of its community, but so that the community and the city can thrive. It it should not, to my mind, really be a very basic, like one needs an apple, you give that person an apple. I mean, I'm reminded of the adage. Sorry?
Sir, thank you, your time is elapsed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Sanar, followed by Muthun, followed by Kadija.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and council members. I'm speaking on behalf of myself only as a resident. I would like to firstly affirm that every resident I speak to is in support of student housing. And everything I hear from council members is supportive of housing for all people that wish to live in Cupertino. And that includes students, that includes school students, that includes college students. And so I don't believe I have in my interactions heard from anyone that is opposed to student housing in Cupertino. I also believe that we need to be supportive of developers in our city, and we are supportive of developers in our city. And I can say with firsthand experience that Prometheus is a first-class developer because I have been a tenant of Prometheus for five years. I have lived in a Prometheus property for five years before I was a homeowner. And if I had to move back into renting tomorrow, I would probably look at a Prometheus property first. I'm appreciative of Prometheus as a developer, and this is not about Prometheus. This is about the city taking care of all of its residents, school students, families, demographics, and college students. And so I urge all of you to look for ways to find solutions to this problem that is an interagency issue that is trying to exclude one set of stakeholders for the other. How do we make this an and instead of an or? How do we turn this into housing for both the communities? And we do not have leverage with FHTA. FHTA frankly has been a bad actor in this whole process. FHTA has not engaged with the community. Many of us have written multiple times to FHTA. We have received no responses. And so we are looking to you to help the community gain leverage in this conversation so that FHTA comes to the table in good faith and behaves as an agency that responds to its voters and taxpayers. That's our taxpayer money that we are funding this with. Please help us out. Thank you.
Thank you, San. Next, we have Muthun, followed by Kadija, followed by Gillian. Welcome.
Hello, good evening, City Council. I'm talking about the multifamily displacement. So oh, sorry. So I'm talking about the multifamily housing moving displacement. So we are there as affordable housing, and this will be a channel for not only the current tenants, it in the future, it is going to be a pipeline to all the K to twelve schools nearby. So I urge everyone to say yes for this one so that it can be due to see for students of Dianza and multifamily students to coexist and look for the other alternative. Thank you.
Thank you, Muthun. Next, we have Kadija, followed by Gillian, followed by Allison Singalani. Welcome, Kadija.
Hello, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. My name is Kadija, and I'm a student at Dianza, and I have come here to implore you to vote no on the moratorium and allow for Foothill and Dianza Colleges to move forward with the affordable housing project. In regards to the concerns I've written presented, it is important to remember that this property will be purchased one way or another, and that the terms of a purchase not made by our district may potentially be more harmful to the current tenants and will additionally further back, set back this vital initiative. Additionally, some may have proposed that another property may be better suited for our student housing, but it's vital to understand that purchasing a property such as a hotel will not be suitable for students as it would require extensive time and money spent rezoning, as well as renovation. You know, as I don't think that no kitchens in the units would be something our student population needs. And all of these measures will set back this detrimental project. I myself, I'm incredibly fortunate to have housing. But despite living at a reasonable distance from Dianza, I have faced various setbacks dealing with the instability of public transportation and issues shared by many of my friends in the community. And I know for a fact that it is much worse for those who have to commute longer distances. Additionally, the quality of life and education is greatly affected for students that deal with incredibly high housing costs that force them to balance extensive work hours in school, which impedes on their success as well as mental and physical health. It is integral to the quality of education for hundreds of current and future students that we are able to have affordable and nearby housing for all lowcome, low-income commuter, international students, and families in need of assistance. Once again, I empathize completely with the uncomfortable position of the current tenants, but I urge you all to please also consider the vulnerable position of our students and invest in their future. Please vote no on the moratorium and support our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Kadija. Next, we have Gillian, followed by Allison Singalani, followed by Rota Frye. Welcome, Gillian.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Gillian, and I'm a Dianza student. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight in support of student housing at Dianza and against the proposed moratorium. I am personally lucky to have housing, however, many students at Dianza are not. As you know, housing prices in the Bay Area are insanely high, and finding any affordable housing near our schools is next to impossible. There is a clearly demonstrated need and want for this with over fifteen hundred students stating they need it, and this number includes over five hundred families. I understand the sensitive nature of the proposed plan, as we will need to evict the current tenants. However, the district is doing everything in their power to make this transition seamless, including giving them an entire year to vacate, as well as hiring a relocation service. We need this housing now. This two hundred million dollar bond we are attempting to use was passed five years ago. And with every passing day you try to stall this project, the likelihood that we will never see any form of student housing goes up. And so I implore you to not pass this moratorium tonight and allow the district to go forward with student housing so that every student, no matter their financial situation, has the opportunity to further their education. Thank you.
Thank you, Gillian. Next, we have Allison Singalani, followed by Rota Frye, followed by Purnith. Welcome, Allison.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Allison Singalani, Director of Policy with Silicon Valley at Home. We are glad to see that the staff memo acknowledges the need to protect vulnerable residents from displacement and the severe shortage of rental housing in Cupertino. We look forward to seeing council's strong support for robust tenant protections and the construction of an abundant supply of new affordable housing. SVI Home strongly supports the purchase by the Foothill-Dianza Community College District of this market rate apartment building and conversion to deed-restricted permanently affordable housing. The conversion of market rate housing to affordable housing is a widely acknowledged and effective strategy to prevent displacement. Economic headwinds and financial uncertainty are currently creating an exceptionally difficult environment to construct new housing, both market rate and affordable. Tenant protections and housing preservation are more important than ever to protect members of the Cupertino community, which include Dianza College students. This conversion provides deeply affordable homes now, complementing the city's efforts to quickly advance the construction of new affordable housing. The McClellan Terrace Apartments are being offered for sale by the current owners. They will be sold to someone. Usually, when older apartments are purchased, they're renovated and leased at much higher rents, often unaffordable to existing tenants, and resulting in a loss of relatively more affordable homes. This purchase instead preserves the apartments as permanently affordable homes to serve generations of Cupertino community members. Protections for existing tenants of McClellan Terrace far exceed what's required under state law. Existing leases will remain in place, and all tenants will be able to extend their lease at the same rate up until June of 2026. Finally, this ordinance likely violates fair housing law by discriminating on the basis of family status, an improper use of the police powers the city has to impose zoning regulations. The urgency ordinance under consideration is unnecessary and harmful to the city's efforts to advance housing affordability. We urge the council to reject it.
Thank you, Allison. Next, we have Purnith, followed by Arisha, followed by Eric Woodbury. Oh, I'm sorry, Rota, yes, I skipped you. We have Rota Frye next.
I'm asking you to please vote yes on the moratorium. Whether you're for or against this project, I urge you to vote yes. Why? It will Why? It will give the stakeholders an opportunity to have a productive discussion. As you know, the college's chancellor came here and spoke during public comment, but did not bother to stay for mere seven minutes to listen to the public. There's been no meeting with the city, and after two FHD-A cancellations, there was a meeting with COSD yesterday. Due diligence is incomplete. We need a pause. Vote yes. I am an advocate for student, affordable student housing, and I've attended FHD-A meetings for two years now, and all the folks sitting here know that because they've been talking their ears off. Advocating, I've been advocating for affordable housing at the same time when time and time again, the board entertained more market rate housing. There were excuses for not building on campus, even though the land would be free, and other Bay Area community colleges are building for even less than FHD-A's purchased. Years ago, they could have worked with Marina on their, on their development, and they still could. In twenty twenty-two, Prometheus bought the property for fifty-two million. Under AB fourteen ninety-two, they were not allowed to evict residents and replace them with younger residents. But that is exactly what FHD-A intends to do, and it has been a moving target. A hundred and twenty days, June of next year, and or, 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 or. Prometheus discovered that they bought a lemon and are now in court over it. While they intend to sell to FHD-A for sixty-seven million, and by the way, they have about two hundred to spend. I ran some comps. There's only fourteen units in Cupertino that are two-bed, two-bath, thousand square feet or more, and under four K. Evicting, evicting our residents and K through twelve kids, kids is a big deal. Please vote yes on the, on, on, on this moratorium. Thank you, Mayor Chow, for doing this so that we can pause and have a meaningful discussion toward a win-win solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhoda, that is your time. Next we have Pranith, followed by Arisha, followed by Eric Woodbury. Welcome, Pranith.
Hello, honorable council members. My name is Pranith, and I'd like to start by saying I one hundred percent support affordable student housing, but I'm here to urge you to vote yes on this moratorium. I lived in McClellan Terrace Apartments for nearly twenty years, and I grew up there, went to school from there, and was able to benefit from the unique opportunity that it provides. These apartments feed into some of the best schools in our area, Kennedy Middle School, Montavista High School, and Deansah College. These apartments are one of the few affordable places within Cupertino for any families, not just Deansah students, any families. Deansah's plans to augment student housing is the right thing to do, and it's understandable. Cupertino is, again, one of the most expensive areas in the Bay, and we should be providing our students with better housing. However, this shouldn't be at the cost of families and students who are already at McClellan Terrace Apartments. The opportunities that Deansah is looking to provide for their own students are going to be traded off for ones that other students already have. And many of the kids at McClellan end up being Deansah students as well. I was one of them, and I really, like, I'm grateful for that opportunity. We should look at alternatives that don't displace dozens of families and students. I would urge you to take the time and do some more of that due diligence on what the other options are. I would strongly urge the council to approve the moratorium and have these plans fully rethought out. Thank you.
Thank you, Pranith. Next we have Arisha, followed by Eric Woodbury, followed by Christina Espinoza. Welcome.
Good evening, council members. My name is Anisha, and my family moved to McClellan Terrace Apartments twenty years ago. Some of my first memories were there. I learned how to ride a bike. I broke my leg, celebrated hundreds of family milestones, and it's saddening to see children being evicted before they are able to create these memories. I went to Lincoln, Kennedy, Montavista, walking from home for thirteen years. My family wouldn't have been able to afford to have us go to these exceptional schools if it weren't for this apartment complex. Housing in this area is not something to laugh at. I think it's clear that the real problem here is the need for more affordable housing in Cupertino. My parents worked hard, day and night, to be able to afford rent to give us access to the education and greater opportunities, something that Deansah students and current tenants both deserve. But for the current tenants, being displaced would be devastating. Being forced to relocate, switch schools, when you've worked for decades for this opportunity, is truly unfair. Not to mention, plenty of residents do already attend Deansah College. Why should they be displaced? We ask that you vote yes on the moratorium to stop the conversion of family housing into student housing and find a better solution for all parties. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Anisha. Next we have Eric Woodbury, followed by Christina Espinoza, followed by Sean Absher. Welcome, Eric.
Good evening, and thank you for listening. I've been a member of this community for about fifteen years, and I also have the privilege of teaching our students that attend Deansah College to further their education and careers. The unfortunate truth is that many of our students, as you've already heard, are housing insecure. Some live in their cars, some couch surf, some make other arrangements. As you can imagine, this has a dramatic impact on their ability to succeed in their educational goals. In twenty twenty, this community approved the Measure G Bond, which imparts secured funding for student housing, which has been identified as a critical need. The district is working to responsibly use those funds to support as many students as possible, as many students as possible. Locating, locating and securing property and building new housing would add time, cost, and complexity to a need in search of an immediate solution. I feel for the residents that will be displaced, but the district has committed to supporting them far in excess of what is required, including staying at the property through the end of June twenty-six, relocation assistance, and covering moving costs. I have every confidence that their needs will be met. Affordable housing is important to us all in Affordable Housing Month, and I hope Cupertino will continue to invest in more affordable housing options to support all of our students. These students are the future of Cupertino, and we need to support them at all levels of their educational journey, and we need specifically to do a better job in providing for our community college students who do not have these resources currently at all. And the opportunity within McClellan Terrace Apartments presents a real solution that could be implemented quickly, not in five to ten years. This project creates affordable housing for students, the construction of which is not possible on campus, given current construction projects and general space constraints overall. McClellan Terrace will not see a change in use, remain multifamily housing. The multifamily housing will just be the students that are attending Deansah and their families. Please do not act to stand in the way of this project. Please support our students. Please support our community. Please do not block this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Next we have Christina Espinoza, followed by Sean Absher, followed by Rosemary. Welcome, Christina.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Christina Espinoza Pibb, and I'm speaking in strong opposition to the proposed interim ordinance. My husband and I have been proud residents of Cupertino for over thirty years. We've raised our family here, and I personally have worked in Cupertino for forty-three years before retiring. We've seen our wonderful city grow and evolve, and part of that evolution has always included welcoming and supporting the students who come to Deansah College in pursuit of a better future. Every year, Deansah serves between eighteen and twenty thousand students. These students don't just attend class. They contribute meaningfully to the economic and cultural life of our city. They eat at our restaurants, shop at our stores, get their hair and nails done at our local salons, buy gas at our gas stations, and these are just a few examples. They are part of our community, and they help sustain many of our small businesses. That said, I want to acknowledge the very real concerns of residents who may be impacted by the changes in their housing. But I want to also commend and recognize that Foothill Deansah Community College District's commitment to a thoughtful and compassionate relocation plan. Current residents would have until June of twenty twenty-six, as you heard before, giving them time and predictability. This would also be supported by relocation professionals to help them find comparable housing and would be providing moving expenses. This approach shows what's possible when we prioritize both compassion and progress. I can tell you from firsthand knowledge that my own brother and sister-in-law were not as fortunate when their apartment complex in Cupertino was sold. They were given a sixty-day notice to move out with only a guarantee that they would get back their full deposit so that it could be used as a deposit for their future apartment, which they were fully responsible for finding on their own. To impose a moratorium on student housing sends the wrong message. It says students aren't welcome. It freezes a few, the few opportunities we have to create more inclusive and affordable living options. It does so at a time when students are already struggling. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Sean Absher, followed by Rosemary Biswas, followed by Devinder Malareti. Welcome, Sean.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, City Council Members. My name is Sean Absher, and I'm here representing the Foothill Deansah Community College District in opposition to the moratorium. We've submitted extensive briefing on why the ordinance is invalid, and based on the comments I've heard from staff, including city attorney, I'd like to use my allotted time to address two points. First, there's no disagreement that the city's authority to enact this ordinance comes under Government Code Section six five eight, five eight C. What the council members have heard tonight is an incomplete statement of your jurisdictional authority. And what I want to do is simply read from the very statute that is your authority. And what it says is, "The legislative body shall not adopt or extend any interim ordinance pursuant to this section unless the ordinance contains legislative findings that there is a current and immediate threat to the public health, safety, or welfare, and that the approval of additional subdivisions, use permits, variances, building permits, or any other applicable entitlement for use which is required in order to comply with the zoning ordinance would result in that threat." You don't have that here. Using the word conversion does not make this an entitlement. It does not make it a permit. I urge you to not adopt the ordinance. There's clearly no jurisdictional authority.
Thank you, Sean. Next we have Rosemary Biswas, followed by Devinder Malareti, followed by Abhishek Gupta. Welcome, Rosemary.
Good evening, council members. My name is Rosemary Biswas, and I live at McClellan Terrace Apartment. I'm a single mom and a full-time employment at Sun River Middle School, and I'm a full-time student at Deansah College. I'm so grateful for, to Deansah for giving me the opportunity to continue my education and rebuild my life. But I'm here tonight because I'm deeply concerned about the possibility of being displaced from McClellan Terrace if it's converted to student housing. My son attends Montavista High School until, and still has two more years until graduation. Apartment, our, our apartment is the only affordable place within walking distance. I don't have family here or anyone to help, so it's the only way he can safely get home while I work and attend school after work. So, if we're forced to leave before twenty twenty-six, he wouldn't be able to finish high school and without, without major disruption. I fully support student housing. I'm a student too, but I urge you to, I urge you to consider families like mine who are already part of the Deansah community. Please vote yes on the moratorium to protect residents who are working, studying, and raising children here. Let's work together to find student housing solution that don't come at the cost of displacing existing residents. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Devinder. I strongly urge to vote yes on this particular subject. The apartment complex is a pillar for our K to twelve public school system since seventy-one. It's been there for like thirty years. So, if this conversion is allowed, what's next? It sets a dangerous precedent. Any college, any tech company, or any private entity could just buy all the apartments around in Cupertino, right? And into an expensive dorms or corporate housing. That's not sustainable. That's not Cupertino. So, meanwhile, Deansah College cannot even meet current demand, right? So, a couple of students are still waitlisted, like, for example, the Montavista students are waitlisted for a couple of classes. So, a lot of people are coming in, into, into our city too. So, the better solution, I say that here, the, the promoter says that he has around six hundred units. Why can't they share like four apartments in each apartment complex for the next two years until the Deansah build an apartment, the complex, the dome in the right way in their, in Foothill or in the Deansah complex? That will be a right solution for the students and right solution for everyone. And meanwhile, the promoters can gracefully give like four apartments in each apartment complex for an affordable rate for the students so that the students can benefit for the next two years. And I strongly suggest to say yes on this and look for some alternatives rather than displacing even the families, K to twelve students, and it's, it will be a public harm for some students for a fourth grader.
Thank you, Devinder, that is your time. Thank you. Next we have Abhishek Gupta, followed by Abhijay Gupta. Welcome, Abhishek.
Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Kitty, Council Member Sheila Jiar, and I really thank you for taking this time for discussing a very important part of this Cupertino. I wanted to ask a few things. I think after hearing, the first thing is, it's very important the students should be getting the support they need. But I want to ask the students why their FUSD vote have waited for four years. You know, they had money from two thousand twenty. For four years, they have not been able to build something. Now they are repla, making it, aren't replacing. I think they should go back and ask the students who voted for a nearby space, ask them if they would like to displace. I want to bring a very important personal experience here. My father expired when I was sixteen. My mother got a hundred dollars being a teacher, but we all worked out by not displacing or replacing other people. My brother went to the top college, full scholarship. I, I passed my engineering, top cybersecurity analyst here, and then my sister became a doctor. We worked hard. I urge the students to work hard and understand that what will make them great for tomorrow leaders is getting the resources they need. If they think that housing is the only thing they should understand, Cupertino is a very expensive place. How would they afford? Someone said they will actually support the community. If they don't have a place to stay, of course, the, the space they will get will give them the house, but how would they expense? Cupertino is a very, very expensive place. We know it because we have kids. And I'm here for the one reason that what stood, what, what my, what my mother did, she did not fall out. She separated us. And as her father, I want to support my kids and all the community members. There are seventy-five students who really are supported by the best schools out there. And I want to also ask Prometheus, they've been very kind of supporting all the residents so far. They have the ability to build. I think they should collaborate better with the, the, the Foothill Deansah to make something in their ground that probably would be the best answer. So, I thank everyone and look forward for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Abhijay Gupta, followed by Rithik Malareti, followed by Peter Landsberger. Abhijay? Okay, Rithik Malareti. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and honorable council members. My name is Rithik, and I'm a junior at Montavista and a dual-enroll student, student at Deansah, who's lived at McClellan Terrace for the past twelve years. To me, it's not just a set of white buildings. It's a community. It's where I first rode a bike. It's where I celebrated all my birthdays, and it's where I made all of my best friends. The proposal to convert our complex into college-only housing would force over ninety families with students to leave. Allowing this purchase will make our school districts declining enrollment even worse, leading to more school closures and more budget cuts. You cannot support strong public education while removing the students that fill those classrooms. Cities like San Francisco, Berkeley, and LA recognize these dangers and pass laws to prevent this from happening, and they still have world-class universities filled with world-class students. Many people today have come in support of Deansah's purchase, citing how their students are the future of our community. Aren't we the future as well? Earlier this meeting, the city declared May as Affordable Housing Month. With this purchase, our city will lose already scarce affordable housing right after acknowledging its importance. That's not just ironic, that's deeply concerning. Please stand with your residents and vote yes on this moratorium, because we are Cupertino too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Peter Landsberger, followed by Tim Shively, followed by Lee Lambert. Welcome, Peter.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members. My name's Peter Landsberger. I'm the president of the Foothill Deansah Community College District Board of Trustees. I'm joined tonight by my fellow trustees Laura Costas and Pearl Chang, who are in the audience. I'd like to make two points. First, when this purchase and sale agreement is completed, there will be no conversion under your zoning laws in Cupertino. The property is currently zoned as multifamily residential housing, and it will continue to be used as multifamily residential housing once Foothill Deansah owns the property. What this proposed ordinance does is essentially prioritize one class of renters, what the staff report calls... does is essentially prioritize one class of renters, what the staff report calls longtime residents, over another class of renters, students at Foothill Deansa. The students who rent apartments at the McClellan Terrace will by definition be Cupertino residents. They will be your constituents. Some of them are likely already your constituents. Foothill Deansa students who live in Cupertino deserve your support as much as other city residents. Do not discriminate against them by taking any action opposed to them tonight. Second, it is not the city's interest to provoke a legal dispute between the district and the city over the use of McClellan Terrace. But that is what you would do if you passed this resolution. We are committed to working with the city in a way that I can assure you will move us forward on our joint, in our joint interests of promoting a thriving and vibrant community by making this project successful. When it is completed, when the purchase is completed, our staff will meet with your staff for that very purpose.
Thank you. That is your time.
Thank you very much.
Next we have Tim Shively, followed by Lee Lambert, followed by Christopher De La Rosa. Welcome, Tim.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm the president of the Faculty Association for the Foothill Deansa Community College District, and I've worked at Deansa College for 33 years, and I even lived in Cupertino for a very brief stretch, about five months before I was unceremoniously removed. And I had 30 days to find a new place in the middle of an academic quarter, and that was no easy task. So I can empathize with residents, but I'm looking at the fact that these residents have over a year to find a place, and where are you going to find anything comparable to that in a private cell? I think they're giving, being given more than due diligence there. I'd like to say also that what I don't get is that these are leased properties, right? I mean, whenever you enter a lease, the terms of the lease are there before you, how long you're going to be there. You may have the lease renewed, but there's never an option for you to say, okay, well, I don't want to move here. Our whole community wishes to stay. And, you know, I worked on the Measure G campaign, so I did see plenty of opposition to student housing in this community. And so I think when you hear folks who don't want the student housing in McClellan Terrace claim to support student housing, you need to recognize that for the disingenuity that it is. I urge you to reject the proposal, and let's move forward and create a community that works for all people, particularly our most vulnerable residents, the students. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Next we have Lee Lambert, followed by Christopher De La Rosa, followed by Paolo Versosa.
Good evening, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, and members of the city council. My name is Lee Lambert, and I'm the chancellor of the Foothill Deansa Community College District. I echo the comments that have been made in support of our students this evening, and I urge you to vote no. I'm here to ask you to support in helping our students, many right here in Cupertino, but as you heard, many travel from throughout the area to have access to affordable housing so that they have access to a high-quality education to finish their degrees and certificates. We're not just any community college. Deansa College is the number-one transfer institution in the state of California, bar none. Foothill College is considered one of the top-leading community colleges, not only in the state of California, but across the entire United States of America. Why? That's why students want to come here, and that's why we need to make sure we provide affordable housing to our students. I also want to just let you know, I've met with both superintendents and one multiple times, and they both are very understanding of the need to have affordable housing for our students. But I also want to clarify something, mayor. You made a statement earlier tonight that is not completely accurate. You did reach out to us, and you said you wanted to meet with us with your attorney, and we did respond back to you saying, "We're open to meeting, but we will need our attorney to be present." From that point on, we've not heard you follow up on our invitation to have that meeting. So bottom line...
I never said I would like to meet, only when their attorney present.
Anyways, mayor, you cannot, affordable, bottom line, affordable student housing is not just a college issue, it's a community issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Next we have...
Please, no clapping. I think I have said that. If anyone do that again, you will need to leave the room. Thank you.
Welcome, Christopher.
Good evening, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, and distinguished council members. I'm Christopher De La Rosa. I'm the vice chancellor of business services at Foothill Deansa Community College District. So I want to talk to you tonight about the McClellan Terrace apartments. This property meets all of our operational criteria for student, affordable student housing. It is within walking distance of Deansa College, has no environmental or deed restrictions, and offers a faster and more cost-effective path compared to new construction as being proposed by some other areas. We have done our due diligence work, and we have done our work in evaluating what's the best housing option for our students. We know our students, and we know that it is important for us to act now. Our time to act is now. This is for our students, including our students with families, not just single students. Without affordable housing, many of our students with families will never be able to complete higher education, especially in the area where we live. All of the residents will have the option to remain until June 2026. We have secured relocation support, and we will provide financial assistance to help tenants to secure comparable housing locally. Our board of trustees and chancellor are committed to ensure a respectful and fair approach in addressing the issue. All current residents will be allowed, as I said earlier, and we will treat them with decency and with respect as we continue with this process. We also have engaged with our state legislators and hope you will see the letter of support from our project from Senator Josh Becker and Assembly Member Patrick Aaron. So thank you for your time this evening, and I wish the best positive result for the sake of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. Next we have Paolo Versosa, followed by Sophia Camiso, followed by Stephen Scharf. Welcome, Paolo.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Paolo Versosa, and I'm student body president of Foothill College, here representing a community of 13,000 students who've been looking forward to affordable housing options for years. We recognize that housing is a universal problem in the Bay Area, but our students have nowhere to turn when they can no longer afford to live here. This is an issue that affects our students now. Why does this matter? It's simple. The longer we wait, the more students have to face the impossible choice between paying the bills and pursuing an education. I'm lucky to be living close enough to Foothill that this amazing opportunity was available to me. Many students are not as lucky as I've been. Many are working multiple jobs. Many have to deal with extreme commutes, and many are paying an arm and a leg just to survive in this area, let alone take courses at my school. Upholding higher education as a basic right and expanding this opportunity to as many individuals as possible is at the heart of what the California Community College System stands for. Foothill College has given me, the son of a young Filipino mother who came to this country with nothing, the chance to redefine my future, the chance to transfer to a school like UC Berkeley. And I know that many, many, many of my peers will go on to make this community and this world a better place because of the educational opportunities at my school. How can we flat-out deny this to students that can no longer live in this area? How can we in good conscience sacrifice the futures of these young people because we're not willing to share, not willing to change, not willing to grow? Ladies and gentlemen, this moratorium is not only a disservice to the constituents that I serve, it's an attack to the values of inclusivity, equity, and equal opportunity that this country and this community is meant to stand for. Is letting this fall to the wayside truly something that we can live with? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next we have Sophia Camiso, followed by Stephen Scharf, followed by Dolly Sandoval. Welcome, Sophia.
Good evening, mayor and vice mayor and city council. My name is Sophia Camiso. This is my fourth year at Deansa College, and I am here tonight to echo what my classmates at Deansa and Foothill have mentioned. Besides being a student, I'm also the psychology club president, and I also serve as a civic improvement commissioner for the city of Campbell. And I really urge you to vote no on this moratorium because I believe that student housing is a huge issue, as already mentioned. Someone recently has confided in me that they are currently going through housing insecurity. I also want to mention that around 10 years ago, someone named Patrick Aaron publicly was having housing insecurity living in his car 10 years ago. Now he is Assembly Member Patrick Aaron, but students are still facing housing insecurity. It has been 10 years, and this issue is still going on, and that's why I believe that something big does need to happen. And I do sympathize with the current residents, and I understand the concerns of being moved, but I have had a deep conversation and understood that the district is going to take care of everybody and make the transition as best as possible, and that is why I feel very comfortable with Deansa going through with the purchase. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. Next we have Stephen Scharf, followed by Dolly Sandoval, followed by Harry Neal. Welcome, Stephen.
Thank you. Speaking for myself, the last time the city council passed an urgency ordinance was in 2019 after the governor signed AB 1482, what I call the Tenant Eviction Act. Cupertino and other California cities tried to stem the evictions that resulted because of AB 1482 by passing those ordinances. Unfortunately, we were too late, and the property owners quickly evicted residents as soon as AB 1482 went into effect. Now we're faced with more evictions. When voters approved Measure G in 2020, they expected that the district would build new housing on campus for their students that did not live in the community, like the 500-plus-bed dorm being built on one of the Aloney College campuses, or the 11 other California Community College districts with on-campus housing. No one expected that the district would buy a fully occupied apartment building and evict all the residents from one of the few naturally affordable apartment buildings and force out the public school students. Studies show that they approved Measure G, the voters, because they understood the need for affordable student housing. The district has sat on the Measure G money for over five years, during which they could have already completed on-campus housing on a little-used parking lot without evicting anyone. Finally, there's precedence for this ordinance. San Francisco adopted a similar ordinance in July 2012 with then-supervisor Scott Wiener stating, "We want to encourage construction of new student housing and block the cannibalization of our existing residents." That may be the only time in history that I've agreed with something Scott Wiener said, but he was spot-on. So I urge you, vote yes on the moratorium. Approve this ordinance before it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Next we have Dolly Sandoval, followed by Harry Neal, followed by Jacob Quo. Welcome, Dolly.
Thank you. As a former council member, one of the first issues I had to grapple with and frankly lost sleep over was the conversion of rental apartments off of Rainbow Indianda Boulevard to for-sale housing. 20 years ago, the then-council decided to authorize that development with several caveats that I believe are included in this proposal. The developer had to cover the moving costs of those pre-existing residents, assigned a staff member to help those residents find like housing, had to offer those residents the first right of refusal for the then-for-sale housing. That was the Murano Project. There are a number of differences between that project 20 years ago and today's. Today's project is a like-for-like proposal. Madam attorney, I honestly do not understand why there would need to be a zoning change. Additionally, I don't understand whether the city is even allowed to discriminate against student housing. I understand the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing based on a number of factors, familial status amongst them. I understand the council may want to succumb to the pressure of our current residents. Their kids likely attend local schools. I think I may see other policy issues, though, underlining this ordinance that you might not understand. As a single-family homeowner with one person living there, would you eventually prohibit me from selling to a multi-generational family because there might be impacts to traffic, parking, and noise on my street? Furthermore, I disagree with your ordinance language. Student housing within the city poses a threat to the public peace, health, and safety, as well as transition of multiple-family housing to student housing would have a current, immediate, and specific adverse impact on public health and safety that cannot be mitigated.
Thank you, Dolly. That is your time.
I appreciate your time.
You're muted. Next we have Harry Neal, followed by Jacob Quo. Welcome, Harry.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Harry Neal. I am a current student at Deansa College. This is, I believe, my fifth year here. This is really a problem of our own making. This is what happens when cities all over the South Bay, all over the Bay Area, all over the state don't build enough housing, period. And if we aren't willing to accept a Band-Aid over a gaping wound, how can we ever attempt to address the fundamental problem? I support the effort by the district to purchase this property and convert it into student affordable housing. However, at the same time, it is very important to mention that one of the reasons that student housing on campus is difficult in its current form is that the parking lots are so heavily used. If we want that to change, we need some good transit. I know, bringing it back to that as always, but still, Stevens Creek being right where Deansa is, is the perfect place for some good quality transit that would help the college develop student housing on campus and support, frankly, everything that we need to do. These are not two issues, they are one and the same. Please vote no on this interim urgency ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Harry. Next we have Jacob Quo. Welcome, Jacob.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jacob Gao, and I'm a student at Deansa College. I'm a member of the Deansa Student Government Finance Committee. I just want to share my story shortly. When I first decided to come to Deansa, my first challenge was to find a housing, and it was very hard and very expensive to find housing near the school, and I don't have a car yet. I take part-time job on campus to support my rent and my daily spending. My friends and I talked a lot about the housing situation. Do you guys remember earlier this year, the VTA bus went on strike? One of my friends has to walk six hours to commute to school because he lives far in Campbell, and he doesn't have a car either. So I just want to say that accessible and affordable housing is vital, and I hope you will vote no on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. And now we will move to those members of the public requesting to speak virtually. There were six that had their hands, their requests submitted in time. That's Aditi Tibrowala, Ellie, Sashi Bagor, Nori, Venkant Raghunathan, and Deepa Shah. Welcome, Aditi.
Hi there. My name's Aditi Tibrowala. I lived in McClellan Terrace from 2007 to 2016. It was actually my dad who spoke earlier live. I attended the local high school. My sister attended the local elementary school, Lincoln Elementary, and Kennedy Middle Schools, and I am also lucky to call myself a Deansa Don. As you can imagine, I empathize with the students who have spoken today about needing local housing. I was lucky to benefit from living at McClellan Terrace with my family and go to Deansa. I went on to attend UC Berkeley and have benefited immensely from the education system that is present in Cupertino. I would like to encourage the city council members to vote yes on Agenda Item Number Nine, to enact the moratorium, and in doing so, give us the space and time to think bigger. I wholeheartedly support Deansa's vision for local student housing. It is an outstanding institution, and its students deserve the stability and focus that nearby housing... and its students deserve the stability and focus that nearby housing can offer. And I believe in Cupertino's potential to think big. We can provide student housing for DeAnza and preserve affordable housing for families with small children who are attending K-12, you know, as well. And so for that reason, I encourage folks to vote yes and to work towards a solution that can uplift everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Ellie, followed by Sashi Bagor, followed by Nori. Welcome, Ellie.
Hello. I am here in support of the DeAnza District buying the McClellan Terrace Apartments to support student and staff housing. The DeAnza District has put this money aside for affordable student housing, and it's time to use it. Owning these student houses will help hundreds of students, their families, and DeAnza staff. I have been informed that the McClellan Terrace Apartments will be changing owners going forwards, and I understand that the current residents are concerned about the change of ownership. But the McClellan Terrace Apartments will be bought by the DeAnza or other parties, no matter what, and those currently living there will be affected. DeAnza has already put forward a timeframe for current residents, unlike other potential buyers. The choices for current residents is either the district with a known plan or another party with an unknown plan. DeAnza has put forward the effort to help rehouse these displaced residents. As I see it, DeAnza is a better choice going forwards for those in the community as a whole. The district is helping house students and their families that are currently unable to afford housing near DeAnza. I implore you to support the push for housing and vote no on the moratorium.
Thank you. Next we have Sashi Bagor, followed by Nori, followed by Venkatesh Ranganathan. Welcome, Sashi.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here to strongly urge you to approve the interim moratorium on converting the multifamily housing to student housing. Adopt a citywide resolution discouraging such conversions. This moratorium isn't a rejection of students. It is a necessary cause. We need time to do a proper, practical study of the long-term impact on housing, schools, traffic, and community stability. Rushing into conversions without due diligence is reckless. The apartment complex under consideration is one of the last affordable housing options for families in the tri-school area. Converting it to student housing would directly displace long-term residents, including families with children in our local K-12 schools. And clustering college students next to elementary and middle schools is simply inappropriate. It raises valid concerns about the neighborhood dynamic and the well-being of younger students. We've heard wildly different numbers, 300 homeless students to 1,500 beds to 700 DeAnza students in need. The reality is, the need fluctuates quarter to quarter. And, you know, with 50% of DeAnza students attending online, how many truly need local housing? What we need is affordable housing. Also, to be honest, DeAnza serves adult population who have made the choice. There are many more community colleges that they should have considered. All said and done, this is a point where we need to stop and think. So please, vote yes on the moratorium and the resolution. Let's protect working families, neighborhood stability, and the integrity of our housing policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Sashi. Next we have Nori, followed by Venkatesh Ranganathan, followed by Deepa Shah. Welcome, Nori.
Sorry. Thank you for this opportunity. Please vote yes to this moratorium. Please reject DeAnza College from acquiring McClellan Terrace Apartments. DeAnza College should build student housing in their campus. Forcing out the current tenants and to convert student housing is devastating, not right. The tenants have been living for years, and their children can walk to Lincoln Elementary School, Kennedy Middle School, Montevista High School, for the reason those students chose the rent there for their children to go to good schools. Their children lose good teachers and friends if they have to move out. DeAnza College students are not Cupertino residents. They live in many other cities. They can drive, ride a bus, and bike to the school. Some students might have financial difficulty, but it is for short term. DeAnza College should help those students who financially rent where they live now instead. Please help the resident in McClellan Terrace Apartments. They are Cupertino residents. Please support the resident in Cupertino instead of DeAnza College students. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Nori. Next we have Venkatesh Ranganathan, followed by Deepa Shah. Welcome, Venkatesh.
Good evening. This is Venkatesh Ranganathan. I strongly urge you to vote yes on Agenda Item Nine, the moratorium on multi-family housing conversion. The McClellan Terrace Apartments are home to over 60 K-12 students who walk to nearby schools. If this complex is converted to student housing by the DeAnza School District, these families will be displaced, and our school will lose students. And we would be losing potentially the ramifications of losing schools and teachers, et cetera. This is not how we solve the housing crisis. Evicting current residents to house others while spending nearly a million dollars per unit of public funds is both harmful and wasteful. Other community colleges have built housing on their own campuses. You should expect something similar here. Cupertino should protect housing for families, preserve walkable school access, and avoid removing tractable property from the city's revenue base. Please vote yes on the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you, Venkatesh. And our final speaker is Deepa Shah. Welcome, Deepa.
Hello, everyone. I urge to vote yes on the moratorium. Remember, we are not voting against affordable housing for DeAnza students, but merely asking for a proper due diligence to be performed and figure out a better solution where we don't have to relocate the existing McClellan Terrace residents who are very much using our schools' K-12 to get the good education, but also find a solution where DeAnza students also can have an affordable housing. So I urge to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, no additional requests to speak that submitted the request prior to the cutoff.
Okay, thank you. So now let's bring it back to the council.
Mayor, that's the city attorney. I just would like to note that we prepared a supplemental report with two inserts. One insert into the ordinance, both of them into the ordinance, referencing the action at the district last night. I think that's important for the findings of urgency. And so when you move to voting on the item, I'd like to make sure that those are noted, that they should be included in the ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So it's already 9:14. So should we have maybe a short two minutes coming from each council member to get a sense of where everyone is?
May I start?
Councilmember one, you want to go first?
I'd like to, okay Ken. So, okay. Well, I hadn't made up my mind on this issue, and I've been actively listening to all sides. I'm actually glad all sides are finding the room to hear all the different perspectives. They are very touching, and they're very telling. But there's a lot unpacked here. I do sympathize with the students. You do need a good place to be to be able to be successful. Housing security is an important need, and I appreciate the earnestness of those needs. I hear the pain and the sacrifices of the residents as well, who have built a life in this community. But based on the way the administration has been addressing the City Council and their bewilderment that our city has a voice, it's apparent that the administration is using the students as pawns in this conversation. We also be saddling students with more debt. The district is trying to cover their inner action and their inaction, and they're happy to dismiss existing city residents' needs. They didn't even think the city would act. The district administrators do not see us as equal partners in the ecosystem. Now they are here, angry, upset, hoping to bully our city residents to bend to their needs. It's not right. It really comes down to some questions. Are we, as a city, saying it's okay to ignore our 90 resident families and relocate them for students and staff housing? Are housing advocates really supporting the displacement of all 57 kids or 67 kids in this district? Is it okay to displace families when the college has the means to build newer and safer and better housing for students on their own land? Is this what you thought the bonds were supposed to be used for? Did you really want Measure G bonds to be spent this way? Why can't the college district build housing on their own land? Do we believe that it's okay for the district to ignore the city as the stakeholder and not even bother to speak with the city? Do we want to get rid of this affordable multifamily housing in our area? This is what has happened. There is precedence to be able to do this in San Francisco and other cities. Our residents are being displaced. Our schools are going to be impacted. The college district had many options. But the main thing that it didn't have to do is cruelly displace families and students and harm Cupertino residents. I now support the moratorium because we need a discussion, and the college district needs to own up. This is not how we thought our tax dollars would have been used, and I'm worried about the loss of the city's local control when the state owns our land. The failed threats by the president today were not welcome. That being said, the Measure G bonds were for student housing, and I still support this. For Prometheus, they have a reputation of doing better. Their threat to sue would be counter to that brand-new reputation. We met. I like them. I'm disappointed in this response from them. We should all be having a dialogue that benefits the stakeholders. We have rushed into a deal without having some time to do due diligence, and we need to meet at the table and come up with a mutual win-win. There should be a solution for all of our parties. And I will support the moratorium and resolution and urge my fellow council members to do so, so we can have that discussion. And I'm open to hearing what everybody else has to say.
Okay, who would like to go? Councilmember Mohan. Two minutes, I think.
I have a couple of questions for staff, maybe city attorney. Does the college have an obligation to inform? Or did the college have an obligation to inform us before they started this process?
You mean a legal obligation?
Yes. Let me get a clarification on another question. Will the zoning have to be modified if this goes through?
The moratorium provides more time for the city to study future zoning ordinance. And if during that period of time, the city determines that it's in the best interest, if the City Council determines it's in the best interest of the city to create a new zoning ordinance, that would be the time to do it.
So we don't know?
Know what?
We don't know.
I'm sorry, I don't know what you're asking.
Does the zoning have to be changed if it's converted from the current situation to student housing?
Now I understand. Yes. If we want to prevent the conversion of multifamily housing to student housing, then the city would need to create a zone in which that would apply, and then the ordinance could be brought that would prevent the transition of multifamily housing to student housing. It would not prevent the building of new student housing, but that conversion, yes.
But the city could also allow that converging. It's just it would be at the control of the city, right? The city can say, "This way would allow you to zone and rezone the site to become a student housing use." It would still be allowed.
Instituting zoning ordinance, this is arch complicated. You wouldn't be able to pick and choose which multifamily home can or cannot be converted to student housing. It would have to be done in a way that was fair under, you know, due process and equal protection. But there are, and in that process, perhaps some multifamily housing would not be subject to the ordinance, and other multi-housing would. For instance, if the multi-housing is within the zone that the ordinance applies to, this moratorium references a half a mile radius around the school. In that instance, the multifamily housing, if it falls within the requirement of the ordinance, then it could not be converted.
But the council could also decide later it doesn't make sense to do a special zoning and then not do it.
Oh, absolutely. You could pass the moratorium and study it and decide this is a bad idea and not pass an ordinance. And then the moratorium...
So it's not certain, yeah.
It's not certain, absolutely. I misunderstood, yes.
Thank you, sorry. I used up your time.
Can I go with one more question? Is the current McClellan Terrace apartment complex, is that considered affordable housing?
The term affordable housing is a term of art in the legal world. And the current housing does not fall within that legal definition of affordable housing. But in comparison to the cost of housing within the City of Cupertino, it's relatively affordable.
It's relatively affordable.
Compared to other housing.
Okay, thank you. I'll rest for now and get back later.
Thank you. Anyone would like to comment? Nice, Mayor.
All right, thank you. So reading from our Housing Element Strategy, Housing Element 7.3.2, Coordination with Local School Districts to ensure the long-term sustainability of public schools, teachers, and faculty in tandem with the preservation and development of vibrant residential areas. The city will coordinate biannually with the local school districts and colleges to identify housing needs and concerns. And then they have an objective here, and the objective is to assist with the development of 25 teacher-school district employee housing units to improve housing mobility opportunities for district staff and promote place-based revitalization. And then there was a statement from a member of the public about the bond measure that we passed. And I think some surprise about this purchase comes from the way the ballot language was written. So Measure G, Foothill DeAnza Community College District Affordable Career College Transfer Classroom Repair Measure. And that ballot measure states to upgrade facilities, preparing students and veterans for university transfer careers like healthcare, nursing, technology, engineering sciences, upgrade repair aging classrooms, labs for science, technology, engineering math-related fields of instruction, acquire, construct, repair facilities, equipment/sites. Shall Foothill DeAnza Community College District's measure authorizing $898 million in bonds at legal rates, levying 1.6 cents on $100 assessed valuation, while bonds are outstanding with audits, slash no money for administrator salaries be adopted, yes or no? And then when you get into the actual language of the ballot, and I'm going to run out of time, it's, there's one sentence that's sandwiched within single-spaced paragraphs that it's hard to say if it's even clear that their intention was to purchase a piece of property and evict local residents. And so if you read the ballot measure language, it doesn't talk about acquiring properties off-campus. And then when you go in to read about all the different facilities improvements, there's, you have to find a buried line in there that would ostensibly allow them to be purchasing and evicting our residents. So I wanted to get that out there. And I think, you know, I feel for the individuals who, you know, voted for this, including myself, unaware that we were going to be evicting our fellow residents.
A few points of clarification, if I could, to the city attorney or to planning staff. One of the things that Housing Element Strategy 7.3.2 also asked us to do was to coordinate with the school districts with respect to the housing needs of college students. Is that not correct?
I'm afraid I don't have that reference in front of me.
Okay. Perhaps planning staff could apply instead, then?
I don't have it in front of me either, but I'll give it my best shot. I believe what the policy you're talking about was really looking at mutual coordination between school districts and the city. between school districts and the city and keeping open lines of communication. I'd have to look at the more specific details, but I think it was just intended as a general policy for coordination between the district and the city since we would obviously have common interests.
Got it. Because there is a response here to a question from Mayor Chow that does state, however, there is a policy HE 7.3.2, Coordination with Local School Districts, that encourages staff to work with school districts to identify housing needs for school district employees and college students.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Correct.
So, so clearly we did commit to trying to do something for college students. I know that we have previously talked in this body about policies that might allow for home sharing and so forth, but that really seems to be about the full extent of what we've really considered over time. Does that sound about accurate to you?
Yeah, that's fairly accurate.
Okay. And I also want to confirm that Strategy 3.3.4 speaks to the redevelopment of existing rental housing, redevelopment of existing housing, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And to have one group of multifamily individuals in multifamily housing is not a redevelopment if you simply have a different set of multifamily individuals in the same multifamily housing, yes?
Yeah, typically redevelopment would involve redeveloping the site physically.
Got it, okay. I just want to underscore some of the tensions and the gaps that are in our, our Housing Element because it seems like we haven't really spent a whole lot of time on this topic and I think it's unfortunate that we haven't really reached out to the district to figure out what would be the best thing for student needs. I'm, I'm also curious about some of the recitals that are in the, the draft urgency ordinance. Is there a reason that a four percent vacancy rate recorded in 2020 was picked? Because that was five years ago.
I would have to defer to the city attorney on that.
Councilman, we did online research and that was the most up-to-date data we were able to find.
I'm confused by that because elsewhere in the staff report, it says that the current vacancy rate in Cupertino is five percent.
I would need to look at that again.
It's, it's in the recitals. It also notes the statewide vacancy rate being something like six point four percent.
I think that's a separate reference. I think one comes from a state document. I would need to look at the ordinance again, but I believe we pulled in data where we could find it and it could be that two different sources of data had somewhat different numbers.
Okay, similarly, I'd like to know, you know, what it was that led to the decision to only look for, in apparently describing the number of available rentals in the area, Zillow listings exclusively for multifamily housing.
It was, you know, this is basically an urgency ordinance and so we were drafting it, you know, in a short timeframe to get it here before the council. And Zillow is a, an easy source of data and, you know, pretty accurate source of data.
So I'll, I'll admit that it's easy, I've used it, I own a duplex here in Cupertino, but that, I will underscore some of the reasons why Zillow is perhaps not your perfect choice. One, if you try to list a duplex, there is no option for a duplex, but it is a multifamily home. There's options for townhomes, there's options for single-family homes, there's options for apartments, that's what they offer. So if you're limiting it only to apartments, you're not capturing an awful lot of rental housing stock in the city, including the fact that these are all self-selected. So you choose as the landowner how you're going to present your property and how you want to list it. It's also not the only listing opportunity that's out there. Some people list on their own. So I'm, I'm not convinced that that is a very fulsome picture of what our existing rental housing stock is or even what the prices are. I was able to find lots of single-family homes that are renting for around thirty-two to thirty-six hundred dollars a month. All right, well, my, my point, I mean, you've, you've allowed plenty of other people to speak over time and you've spoken over time many times on your own, Mayor. So I just want to make sure that it's very clear here that there are lots of problems with these recitals. I think they're factually incomplete and I don't really see how it's possible for us to substantiate this on an urgency basis.
If I may respond, since it's an urgency ordinance, it's really putting a pause in place so that staff can do a deep dive, including planning staff, city attorney and other staff, to create an ordinance that is based on more sort of broad-based research.
I understand and appreciate the point. I am underscoring the fact that I think the recitals are insufficient.
Okay, so I would like to begin with a motion and then I'll make my comment. My motion is to not approve the moratorium, but then approve the resolution. May I have a second, please?
Moore, second?
Thank you. So then I will make my comment on the reason. First, Prometheus, thank you for coming here and thank you for meeting with me. When I tried to understand your business strategy, we did not talk specifically about this project. And I really appreciate that Prometheus holds properties for the long term. You build housing and you provide housing in this area. And rather than flipping them for the short-term gain at the expense of future owners, an approach that often drives up housing costs. This is an issue, not an issue of whether to provide student housing or not. As we have seen here, we all support providing housing and other services to vulnerable populations, which include housing insecure students. It's a matter of whether responsible public agencies should do the due diligence to ensure shutting down people, to ensure long-term impact of any decision we make is evaluated and mitigated, rather than shutting down people who bring up valid concerns. There are options to provide housing. Cupertino Inc. is offering extended stay for students. That's available immediately. The, the college district can also consider buying Aloft, which was constructed in 2012, pretty new, like San Jose has done to take over a hotel, built more. This could be available next year. Construct even this year. Construct new student housing such as San Mateo Community College has done. With ninety million dollars, they will build brand-new new student housing to house three hundred and thirteen, sixteen students. They started planning in 2021 and received sixty million state grant and they will start construction in the summer. But this district spent, planned to spend ninety million dollars to buy fifty-year-old McLaren Terrace and renovate at a cost per bed, per bed that is more expensive than the brand-new housing at San Mateo Community College. The voters approved the Measure G in 2020. The district let the time pass and failed to plan for new housing in the past five years. We are losing naturally affordable housing with this kind of converging. The district has failed to engage the stakeholders before they make decision on March tenth. They have shut down all communications to residents, even elected city council members who wish to do their due diligence to determine the impact of the change in land use to the city and its taxpayers. The district sends a message that they simply do not care about the most important stakeholders, the residents of Cupertino, whose property tax and sales tax dollars go to provide funding for Foothill D'Anza College. Like one of the public comment said, this is an inter-agency issue where one stakeholder is being excluded from the discussion. And I, I tried to make a correction for President Lambert's comment. On April first, the district did reach out to set a meeting. On the third, the meeting was canceled. And I reached out to say, could I still get some questions answered? The answer was, we look forward to answer your question with your city attorney and our legal team present at a future meeting. I never brought up that I would like attorney present, it's the district who brought it up. You can make public record request for all the emails. And I've made every effort to be transparent with every action we make, I send an email to the Foothill D'Anza College leaders so that they are aware, but they have never proactively reached out to us, not even about the fact that they are closing the due diligence yesterday. And I didn't know Chancellor Lambert is waiting for the city to contact him for a meeting because I thought they initiated the initial meeting request, maybe another one will be sent. So there is some miscommunication. I'm not voting on the moratorium, but I hope the Foothill D'Anza leaders will begin collaborating with Cupertino city staff by sharing necessary documents and maintaining open communication with the city council and the residents to support a thorough and efficient due diligence process that best serve our shared constituents. Thank you. So, is, I don't know. So, should we just vote on, on this?
Please call the question.
Okay.
Mayor, so just to clarify, you, your motion is to adopt resolution?
Unless anyone would like to make a short thirty-second comment?
No, I would-
Councilmember Fruein?
I think that, that because the resolution contains many of the same factual claims that the recitals do in the ordinance, I am not comfortable with it. I would instead, since it seems to be that the spirit of the resolution is that we should actively try to engage with the Foothill D'Anza Community College District, I would offer a substitute motion instead that we pick option number four, to do nothing, and that we reach out actively, direct staff to reach out actively to the Foothill D'Anza Community College District to discuss what options exist.
Thank you, Councilmember Mohan.
You spoke about the resolution, I'm not clear what the resolution is, is going to say.
The resolution has only, I think, three actions. One is state that we encourage. Can someone please bring it up, maybe share screen if possible? Or I'll find it.
I can share my screen here.
You'll have it?
Yes.
Do you have it or I can share it?
Yes.
Oh. I think it's good that we know what resolution. Could you share the last page? I think before, there are a lot of facts. Oh wait, are you, you are sharing the minutes?
Oh, yeah, I misunderstood, Mayor, I thought you wanted the-
Let me share.
Attachment C, I think.
I'll just share, I have it on my screen. Okay, so here is the last page of the resolution. Before that are all whereas, those are the fact findings. So the last page is, this is the resolution, the main thing is section two. We, we direct the staff to still do the study session that I think we have unanimously voted to agenda is to look at whether student house, zoning is possible or there are other ways, just so we have time to consider impact to Cupertino. And direct the staff to encourage higher education to focus on building permanent on-campus housing that supports student success. Building permanent on campus, on student success and safety, utilize extended stay hotels as temporary affordable options when appropriate without displacing multifamily use housing. Reaffirm the city's commitment to maintain a healthy balance between student and housing needs. Yeah, okay. So let's vote, please. And roll call, please.
So Mayor, to be clear, your, your motion is to not approve the, or the moratorium, but adopt resolution number twenty-five dust zero-two-five?
Yeah. And yeah, the reason that not moratorium is the college, originally I thought that's necessary so that the college can utilize one hundred twenty days to, so that, to allow us to do the due diligence, but that's already closed yesterday, so I didn't see a point of having the moratorium. So we should just focus on the study session.
Thank you, Mayor. And through the mayor, you've called the question?
Yeah, okay, please roll call.
Mayor, can I ask a quick question before we vote? Is there any, no?
Okay.
The resolution as it stands, is, is that the resolution we are voting for?
Yeah.
Can we separate the, your first action from the second action? I am, you want to, I am not-
I think my first action is moratorium, we can just remove it if it's not in the motion, if we don't even vote. So the motion is just approve the resolution.
Correct. And you, Mayor, you've, you've called the question?
Yeah, that's-
Vote. I have concerns about some of the language and-
And then you-
So are we saying no to the moratorium?
Yeah.
Okay.
So do you want the motion to include no on moratorium or not? It, it, we don't have to include the moratorium. I think, I would amend the motion to only approve the resolution with my second to agree.
Correct, that's what we agreed on originally.
Okay, so call the question.
Can I just clarify? So the vote on the table is not, has nothing to do with the moratorium.
Just the resolution.
It is a vote to approve the resolution.
Yeah.
And the resolution doesn't stop anything, it just says, the city council wants to look at, how can we solve this student housing problem, basically, I mean-
And also encourage new, building of new student housing.
Correct.
So just to be clear, it's not specific to D'Anza College, it's in general, it's a general resolution-
Yeah.
-for all developers to, that we are encouraging new housing.
And we are not, it's a resolution, so it doesn't really adopt policy, it's kind of a direction to staff.
To staff to explore?
Yeah, we will bring back a study session to find out what we-
In general, for the, for the entire city, not just for D'Anza College.
I think so, yeah.
Called the question.
Okay. So, let's vote.
Councilmember Fruein?
No.
Councilmember Mohan?
No.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Motion carries with Fruein and Mohan voting no.
May I request a bio break?
Yeah, a five-minute break. So we will come back at nine fourteen-nine.
And, oh, oh hi, Councilmember Wong, well, why, what are we doing?
He is there, but he is stepping on the plane, I think, in about five minutes, right?
I'll be on a plane in five minutes.
I see.
That means the location, the meeting location, which is Terminal Three in Dubai, won't, there won't be a way that's accessible for public. City attorney can explain.
Yes. It looks like you understand where we're going with this, Mr. Wong, I mean, Councilmember Wong. We noticed the meeting for Councilmember Wong's presence in an airport in Dubai and that is appropriate. And the reason we announced the location is because if anybody wanted to show up and participate in the meeting, they would show, and they were in Dubai, they could show up there and participate in the meeting. It's a way of, the Brown Act allows people to participate remotely by opening their location to the public. Now, Councilmember Wong is boarding an airplane. That airplane is not open to the public and it's not the location that was disclosed under the Brown Act on the agenda. And so the public really cannot participate from that location. And this is meant to make it so that if, if the location was more close to us geographically, maybe one of us would have shown up at his location to participate in the meeting. And then if he left and the location became unavailable to that individual, they would not be able to participate in the meeting. And the open meeting laws are very clear, they want the public to be able to participate in the meeting. And so be- And so because of that, we cannot continue with the meeting.
Uh, no, I, Floyd, I think one more thing is, even if, if Councilmember Wong were here and he has to leave due to anything, he can leave. We can continue the, the meeting with four person, uh, with four council members. But this situation, if Councilmember Wong leaves, we cannot continue the meeting. Why? You should explain that.
Because if the public.
That the, the location is still there, it's still open. But Councilmember Wong won't be there. And there will be no one there to receive public comments or provide access to this meeting.
That, and that is another point, that if somebody were in Dubai at that location, they would lose access, Zoom, remote access to this meeting.
It, I think even this, this situation might happen, even if someone is in, say, LA. If they are in LA and then Councilmember Wong, all of a sudden, doesn't have to leave and couldn't continue. And because he couldn't continue from that location, then, then we would still have to end the meeting.
Because the public can't participate.
Yeah, so the location, whether it's Dubai or anywhere else, doesn't really matter.
At your home.
Yeah, it could be. It's, so whenever we announced remote locations, the people at the remote location have to participate fully in the meeting.
That's true. There are, um, more than one exception to having to be present for the meeting. This is the one exception that requires the public to be able to join from your location. There are two others, just cause an emergency, that members of the body can take advantage of to participate remotely. And then they don't have to open their location to the public. And the, uh, agenda doesn't identify their location, so there's no risk that somebody would show up there to participate. Then you can move forward with the meeting, even if that person who's participating remotely is unable to continue to participate because no member of the public would have shown up there because it wasn't agendized that way. It's a little bit complicated and arcane, but.
We are very sorry. And I think the, the remaining of the agenda is, uh, the Westport, uh, property that we will try to see how we can move forward. We do want to move forward with that item. Yeah. Okay, so now, the meeting is... So I think Councilmember Wong is not, is the. Okay. So I think we, how many minutes you have?
I better run.
You better run, okay. So let's adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.